Good evening, this is David Goldberg, the Chair of the Oregon City Library Board.
Recording in progress.
Okay, I'm gonna call to order the working session of the Oregon City Library Board on December 21st at 5:02 PM. In attendance are Cynthia Andrews, Nick Derrickman via Zoom, Larry Osborne, Heidi Blackwell, Denise Butcher, the Operations Manager, and Greg Williams, the Director. With that, we'll have the Library Director's Report.
Okay, thank you David. I will be very brief with my reports. Just normally I don't do reports during work sessions, but since we haven't had a regular session in a couple of months, I just wanted to at least send the data, the statistics. Everybody's been getting the weekly updates emails, so we'll just focus on stats. I don't have anything to share on stats. The only thing I wanted to point out is you'll see the program stats look a little different than they did before. Excuse me, the State Library has updated the way that they want to have those stats reported to them every year. And so rather, we like to be efficient, so I'd rather collect them once and then be able to report them, you know, kind of as is. So this is kind of the format that the State would like to start seeing those stats in. And so we're going to start capturing stats that way. This is a work in progress, and as we get into the tactical plan, there's an item there. We'll talk about stats collection and development. But that's why the programming stats look a little different. But this is how they'll basically, these are the categories we'll be using from now on. And we're also trying to make this a little more automated collecting, so I can just, you know, when reported, have it all done, because that makes me happy. But, so that's that. And then I don't think there was anything else, statistics stats wise, that I wanted to really call out and share. But if anybody's got questions about anything.
There was one thing I want to point out. I got in a nerdy mood and went through the budget with a little bit more precision than sometimes I would. And I found something that at first just confused me, and Greg and I have spent some time with it. And if you look on the budget report, the actual Biennial Budget Report, there's a column that says 2022-23 balance, and it is not that. It is not the balance, actually the sum of what's been expended year-to-date. And it really threw me off, because if that was the balance, then we didn't have enough money to get to the end of the year on things. And so we did a little bit of research, and it's just a title problem.
Yes.
So that's the end of my nerdiness for the year.
Great nerdiness. And I told David how much I appreciate having people look at data and look at stats.
Can you change that?
Yes, I will. I will work with our, this is a custom report that our Finance Department together. And they're really, I could probably figure out how to do it, but I will ask them to do it just so I don't accidentally break anything. But yes, they should be able to change that column header, so it'll say something like year-to-date expenses.
That's what it is.
Something like that, yeah.
I was just gonna say that, and I went through some, when I went through the statistics, I brought to mind that there, when we look at the whole service area and outside the city, there might be some other interesting measures that we can look at. For example, I'm curious if the folks that are outside of the city use electronic materials more than in the city, for example, just as an example.
Yeah.
Those kinds of things, if we really go through when we're, when we get more into the need of the discussion around service area and those, you know, in the city and outside the city. There are some other things we could look at.
Yeah. And those will be great topics to talk about as part of the tactical plan and looking at stats. And just to set, stuff like that, we should be able to get sometimes with the eBooks. That depends on what the vendor is able to provide to us. So, but I would bring back information of what we can get, you know, how great, yeah, with that. But I think we could probably do that.
Any other questions or concerns just about the Director's Report, his report stats?
Stats, and then I had one more update item, which David had asked about previously. I just wanted to give everybody an update, the survey for the unincorporated area. We had some other things going on, but we have, we've gone through the procurement process. So the contract is in place, we'll be having, I would anticipate it probably after Christmas. Because I'm guessing that the vendor would not be available before Christmas. But we will get with them, and we will get a, we will get a schedule. And my intent was, we have our, we had that survey subcommittee. If that group, because I know the vendor will want to meet with somebody just to kind of review the questions and make sure. And so I was presuming that that group could meet with the vendor, kind of do the hard work, and then bring the final version to this board for approval.
Makes sense to me.
Does that work? Okay. Okay, but that process is in place. And just to let everybody know, we have it in the budget. It was $13,000 for that. We, they gave us two options. One was with just a higher level of statistical significance, which was similar to what the city uses for all their other surveying. And we just decided, you know, for an extra $1,500, we'll go for the more statistically balanced sort of a head.
Okay, sounds great. All right, let's move on to the discussion items. The first is the discussion of the community room usage policy. And, you know, when I read through this tediously, I have to say, and all the supporting material, I, this should be simpler than this. And so basically, you know, I asked Greg, what are the issues? What are we trying to fix here? And then let's fix it.
Okay, so, okay, so thank you. And please, it's in China. So the issue that we're, the biggest issue we're trying to fix is, we've got this community room space that has, and community members want to use it, as we've discussed in this group. There is a, there is not sufficient meeting space anywhere in the Oregon City area to accommodate all the demand that's out there. And while it's not, you know, it's not something that one department or one city entity can solve on their own. You know, we want to try to contribute as much as we can. And so we've been thinking about, you know, the requests that we get are for meetings which don't really match what the current policy says that we can accommodate. And so I wanted to-
Can you give us an example?
Yes, so Oregon, so one of the questions I asked, so one of, the biggest example is, the biggest thing that we run into is, we have a policy statement in there that any meeting in the community room needs to be open to the public. And so that is, that makes it much more of an event space. So that is so that, you know, the, under that scenario, somebody can come in with an author talk or something that they want lots of people to come in. What does not encompass are, we get lots of requests from county departments wanting to do a strategic retreat, you know, strategic planning retreat. Or I just had one from the Lima Falls Heritage Area Committee wants to do a planning session. And they say, hey, can we meet there? And my first question is then, is this meeting open to the public? And if this is not a meeting that's open to the public, I'm sorry, our policy says that we don't accommodate that. So that, that's, that's the biggest, that's the biggest one that we get. We had, we had County Tourism just ask us a couple of weeks ago. You know, we had a staff retreat, we want to do a debrief, can we come here? And I had asked them, well, can anybody from the library come and sit and listen to your staff debrief? So that's one question I have, is, is, if that's what our policy says. And I wanted to come to the body and talk with you about this, because I was not around when the building was built, and you know, what conversations we'll have with the community. And I just want to make sure that eventually we have a policy that matches what we think that room should be used for.
That language came from the Library Bill of Rights?
I'm not sure. I'll double check. I don't think it's that it has to be open to the public. I think it has to be equitably offered to anybody who uses it. I looked at, I looked at our Clackamas County Meeting Room Usage Policies and some other peers. And the only one I found that had something similar was Multnomah County. But, you know, Wilsonville doesn't have that same restriction. Milwaukee doesn't have that same restriction. When I looked at the, and maybe it's, and I can triple check, but my recollection is that the Library Bill of Rights is more concerned with, if you're going to make meeting space available, you cannot arbitrarily deny usage based on a group's, you know, philosophy, you know, what they want to use it for. You're perfectly able to say, yes, you can use this for a private meeting.
I was wrong.
Yeah.
The line actually reads, "To state whether the meetings held in library spaces must be open to the public or if the library allows private meetings."
Right, right. So yeah, so our current policy does not permit private meetings. And honestly, that's the biggest, that's the biggest request that we get, is to use that room for private meetings.
Well, and I think that's why it was put in as well, though, is because so many people wanted it to be private. We said, okay, you can have a private meeting up here, but you can't have a private meeting downstairs. Because that room is really supposed to be for community gathering and programming that, you know, benefits the entire public.
Don't we have a question about the not-for-profit also? Is that, is that part of it?
Yeah, I would be, the wording there is challenging for me. Because it says, we have two specific acknowledged use cases. One is for nonprofit groups aiming for the civic betterment or community benefit, et cetera, et cetera. That's a little hard to put you, that can be hard to put your, put your arms around. But then the second group says it can be for individuals exchanging information. And that's not necessarily a community group.
So the not-for-profit is not, doesn't make it exclusive to not-for-profits, is that true?
Because the letter says groups, clubs, entities, individuals.
Yes.
Like, I like that statement better than, because it'd be nonprofits, like, comma, community groups.
Yes.
Yeah, it would be more appropriate for this space.
And I don't think, it says you can't use it for profit, profit-making purposes. But for example, like Hillsborough, the Hillsborough Public Library, they address homeowners associations, which are private, you know, private homeowners associations of condos. And they say, in their interpretation, that's a group that reasonably can, is contributing to the betterment of community life. And so they say that that's fine. Hillsborough, that's any kind of use go on in their library. But again, I just want to make sure, before I come back with, you know, some revisions, suggest, suggested revisions, to try to, to try to get a policy that's easier for us to maintain, that I'm not going in a different direction than, than the board as the representatives of our community.
And one thing I noticed was, in one of the supporting documents, it said something about that the, it would defer to the Director, and then it could also, there could be a referral process if the, if they were denied the private meeting space. And I didn't see that we had that, those steps in ours.
We could, I-
Or, you know, then it's a little bit more on, yeah, your discretion, and then there's another step.
And we can certainly put that in. I would rather, right now, it's, I don't want to be in the middle of, you know, of a group saying, why can't I use this for a strategic retreat? You know, why can't a county thing? So I don't want to be saying yes to want to know to be-
And there were, so just, like, we had statistics on this, that 30, like, this room is used 30% of the time.
Yeah.
So I don't know if there is, that exists from previously, how much that room is used for other, other groups. To get an idea of when it might be available, like, blocks of times, or something like that, where-
We can certainly pull that, but I think they will be, correct me if I'm wrong, it will be only usage that was, it won't have any private meeting usage in their, for community benefits.
And I'm just saying, if it's like, if it's during the daytime and it's not being used because there's not a lot of groups coming from outside needing to use it, then it could possibly be a, like, a block of time that, this is the private meeting time, you know?
And so a designated, a designated, okay.
That's, it's just an idea, the king.
It'd be interesting looking back at, well, to see how much of the usage is for the library versus outside groups.
Absolutely, you get the priority. I mean, even if it comes that you end up, you get an author that can only come at this time, you apologize to the group that had reserved, and try to give them a preference to, yeah, to choose it. But the library programming, whatever that umbrella term means, it gets priority.
Okay, that's good, because that's, I do want to fix that, because we do use it for internal staff meetings, because we don't have anywhere else to meet. And the policy doesn't specifically say that, you know, we're allowed to do that. So I think I would love to include, you know-
That's an easy one.
Yes.
That's probably one of the easiest ones of the whole group.
Okay.
Just do it, just do it.
Okay, I want to make sure I've got, because again, you know, if I ever get a question or complaint, I want to be able to say this was something that you engage our Library Board on. Library Board, you're designated representatives to give us input into how we craft policy. And if we have any questions or concerns, we can certainly make, you can certainly come express those to the Library.
Going back to the question of public and private meetings, what, can you summarize the arguments against allowing private meetings?
I will defer to you, well, I can think of some, they're more general. I don't know what discussions were had when the building was built.
I don't think, honestly, that we actually talked about it. Because the entire, the way that it was sold, the building project, was all that it was going to be for community better space.
That would be reasonable, so, there's no problem.
Well, so, okay, so the problem is, you know, for private, we still do have behavior rules on there. So we've got things like, you can't have litter bombs going off in there. And so if we say, you know, be open for private use, somebody's going to want to have a birthday party in there. And so we're going to have to have a conversation with them about this is what's acceptable for a birthday party, and this is what's not, and we're fine with having those conversations.
Yeah, and you're right, we get those, we used to get those all the time. Birthdays, wedding showers, baby showers.
Really? Yeah, yeah. So we do have some other restrictions on how to use, so that's a private meeting. Probably the biggest one that causes me, not concerned, but other libraries have dealt with this. It's the, it's the nature of the group using it. So, you know, if, if you generally have a meeting space that you say is open to private use, you know, that can be for groups whose goals or whose philosophies may not be consistent with community expectations. But in a scenario like that, as long as they are obeying our behavior policy,
Absolutely.
we're not going to get involved. Now, that has, I think, about a year ago, year and a half ago, San Francisco Public, you know, went through this. And I believe, please don't quote, but they had, you know, they booked the Proud Boys or, you know, somebody in, because they're, they're meeting room space, and we don't make, we don't make decisions on the content as long as they, as long as they obey our behavior policy, they're welcome to use the space. And there was a huge amount of community outfracture. And so that's, that's the biggest thing that I see.
The birthday party issue would fall under the clarified scope. So I don't see that, I think there would be an out there where you could easily say, well, that's not, you know, the exchange of information.
Yeah, I would not have a space used for parties like that. I just, it's not really what the library is all about. And I recognize that there's a space issue around, but a lot of churches have fellows, you know, have halls and meeting rooms and that kind of thing, and hotels, and, you know, I just feel like it's not a party room, unless it's a party for the library.
For private is, for example, a meeting of one of the city departments who don't want people to, I mean, where's private, right? So it's not a private-public issue. It's a, what a scope of the, of the event issue.
I understand, but I-
You know, it's interesting, my bias is in the opposite direction.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and I'm a little surprised, but I've thought about this some. I mean, it's a community space, and why can't it be used for a birthday party? And if I want, and if we can get more kids to know the library for a birthday party, then more kids are exposed to the library.
That's a good argument.
And as long as they're behaving, and they're cleaning up, and they're, and they're following the rules of order. And I would, I would say that the priority should be, first, for the library's own needs, right? And then, either on a first-come, first-served basis, or with, with no, I mean, I just think we cannot be setting any expectations of what's discussed or what's not. If people want to have private media, I think that's fine, too. The place that I would have difficulty with is, what if somebody wants to have a craft fair out of that space?
They do.
That's what I, I'm more concerned about the, you know, do we open it up to businesses to set up their wares there and have a, you know, a, that kind of thing? Which we don't really limit in the conference room upstairs, that can be used by business. But I, I don't know, it just seems like it wouldn't be appropriate for, for downstairs.
Yeah, that's what, it's my fault.
The party parts, I disagree with, we do not want parties. We had a, it was a parenting group that was meeting here, and they were meeting up here, and there was someone watching their children down in the community room. It was a, we were having to, you know, watch the children, no, you can't eat that here, no, you need to take that back in the community room. It became a huge staff, staffing issue, so.
So the top priority is library use. That could include staff meetings, trainings, whatever. And I think that that language needs to be added, because it is in the current policy. Then it seems to me that the second priority would be, you know, city, county, or other local government meetings, which can be a closed meeting, except as provided by law.
Right.
Because some of those meetings have to be open and public, and some do not. But I do think that it's advantageous to say, you know, the city planning department have a place to go in private to talk about their issues, hopes, dreams, frustrations. And it's disruptive to have some community member just sort of dropping in.
Right.
You know, and so I think it could say, you know, that those meetings can be closed meetings except for as provided by law. And then I think within the scope of acceptable usage. So, and then the third, you know, I just feel like, you know, nonprofit, we don't want particularly craft fairs in there, and, you know, I think, I think it's, that's come as, come as available. I mean, can't say this group can meet and that group can't, so that's not appropriate use of public space. But behavior policies do apply.
Right.
So can you enough?
I, yeah, I'd like to hear, and I am interested in Heidi, because I know you have a lot of conversations with communities.
The biggest one that I have heard about was the after-hours.
Yes.
So that's the one that I've mentioned more recently, after-hours. So we had some discussion on that, how that, you know, might look to train someone that has that ability to open the doors and close the doors, and the library would be locked off. And that, that's the need that originally the library was going to meet for some, and, and, you know, they are, some are city-adjacent, like the Neighborhood Association. Others have been groups that are, you know, yeah, more nonprofit or even community-based organizations. Which is a little, you know, that, easier to say no. But the Neighborhood Association is a city-adjacent, and that they feel like there are people there that could get trained and would be responsible for it.
The Neighborhood Association, that actually brought that up to the board.
They did, a lot of it.
Yes. Yeah, and we are working on a, on a, on a, a policy to accommodate, to get people trained to do the after-hour stuff. I want this board to realize that, when we think about it, it's not just neighborhood associations. It's, I, we have to make this available equitably, so we've got, I think it's either four or six active county CPOs that are in our service area. And so I, I think we have to-
That's me.
So I think, I think we do need, Greg, I think we need to spell out Neighborhood Association. And the reason I say that is because Neighborhood Associations are not part of the city. They're sanctioned by the city, but they're not part of the city, you know? And secondly, it, what else was I going to say? They're, they're also not for, I mean, they're, like, our neighborhood, I don't, I don't know, some of them may have, you know, not-for-profit status, but we don't even have an organization defined. We don't report anything to the state or anything.
MNA was having cake walks and raffles and some other things. And when we found out about it, we said you cannot get, you know? They do have some monetary, you know, requirements.
So, so that, that's, that's good. I think what we were thinking about with Neighborhood Associations and CPOs, I would be, what we were thinking about was having each of those groups kind of designate volunteers. And we'd say, okay, if you want to be eligible to use this space after-hours, what we're going to need from you are the names of two people, you know, who we will train. Say, this is how you open the facility, this is how you close the facility, this is, you know, who you need to call if something bad happens, here's how the technology works, here's how they set the alarm, blah, blah, blah. Get those people on a list of available, of available volunteer resources, make sure that they stay trained. And then that would be the list that any Neighborhood Association who wanted to participate could draw from. So, for example, if Kineema wanted to use the room, they wouldn't have to get a Kineema volunteer. They would have this list of all the other participating Neighborhood Associations, and it could say, oh, you want me to call, I'm just going to go down the list, and I'm going to get two people who are available to come, and we'll serve that role. And that's what we would need in order to book the, to book the room and say, okay, you can use it for, for after-hours.
Within what hours could I do?
The park, the park closes at 10 o'clock. I mean, in different city codes, as you can't be in a park after 10 o'clock. And since we're in the middle of the park, that seems like a natural cutoff to me.
Right, that sounds good.
Okay, and then I was thinking, and I would love your thought on this. That's not something I'm real keen to offer to a whole bunch of groups. So are, am I understanding, this would be kind of a, not a perk, but in recognition of the fact that Neighborhood Associations and CPOs do have this particular function, that we would be, we could craft a policy that allows them to do this, but that might not be something that's available to any, any group that wants to use it after-hours. Is that, that would be my preference.
We, previously, our time limit was nine o'clock. Not to say it tends that, but yeah, that's what we used to do.
But does that, I, I, and I'm looking for feedback from you. So like, for example, when we think about a nonprofit that we all, you know, like, like, like Love One, you know, if Love One came and said, we would love to have an after-hours meeting, you know, can, can, can we do so? The way I was thinking about this would be, I'm sorry, you know, I'm not staffed to do that. The only groups that we, you know, that we can currently accommodate are Neighborhood Associations or CPOs, and they have to go through this process of being certified.
What are the hours for the library? I mean, I mean, how late is the library open?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Well, Monday through Friday, 10 to 7.
Yeah.
Saturday, 10 to 6, and Sunday, 12 to 5. And we did talk with, we had a good meeting with often Neighborhood Association, and we did say, you know, if it's during operating hours, there's, there's no problem. So we asked, you know, Saturday, you know, I said, we'll talk with our, we'll talk with our membership.
Interesting thought.
Because when they, when you reserve it, so this is very easy to reserve. I mean, you go online and you-
Yes.
Put your name in, and, you know, it sounds like in the policy that to reserve the room downstairs, there needs to be a phone call, and like-
We would like to-
Conversation.
Yes.
You know, so at that point, it seems like that there'd be some decision or, you know, you know, clarity to the group so that they understand that they're eligible or why they wouldn't be.
Yes, yes.
Or they need to refer to whomever would be making that.
We would definitely do that, yes. Our goal is, it will be the same setup process. You go and you say, I'm interested in it. And we confirm every reservation that happens. You know, for up here, it happens within half an hour or so.
Very nice.
But yes, both with the community room, we, we would designate particular staff and say, okay, if requests come in, we need you to, you know, reach out to them and get a little more information and make sure that everything is okay. And then they could go and say, yes, we'll confirm the usage. So yes, that's how we would do it. But is this board comfortable with, again, that after-hours, I hate to call it a privilege, but the, because again, the current policy says it's the Director's, it's the Director's discretion, and I don't want to be in the middle of, I don't want to tell one Neighborhood Association, yes, and another Neighborhood Association, no.
I think you probably should run it past Council, though.
I, I can, we can certainly do that. I have heard from city commissioners that they are very keen on getting a solution in place to expand after-hours usage, and I think-
So are you saying the only after-hours usage are the, like, Neighborhood Associations or the CPOs? Is that, is that what you're stating?
That, that is what, that is where my mind has been going in the, in the policy road. I called them, I called them Goal One groups, because the Neighborhood Associations and CPOs were born out of the statewide land use goal of improving public participation in land use decisions. And so that was kind of a, that was kind of a- a hard rail I could put around, you know, a defining characteristic to combine what these groups are all about. So in my way of thinking, yes, because again, I was not. There's also a staff impact to us to train people to make sure they are, that they can use so successfully after hours. I will tell you Denise and I, our biggest fear is that even when we train people, we are gonna get the calls. You know, everything, because I'm looking at the calendar of CPOs and neighborhood associations. It averages out to like three times a week, you know, for evening meetings and.
I think you, I don't think, I think you only get, you'll probably get Keneema and McLaughlin. I don't think other neighborhoods will. It's hard to say. I know, I know Park Place would not, we, we would not want them.
Well, that's good. I've, I've had requests from four neighborhood associations so far, so.
But I don't know. I mean, maybe if we had, you know, if it was, if it was easy and we had no other place to go, I guess we would definitely consider.
So yeah, so I, and I, yeah, we, we want to make sure that whatever we offer, we're able to do it. So, so yeah, my, my, my preference from an operational perspective would be to limit this to neighborhood associations and CPOs within our service area in recognition of their status and not offer this to other nonprofits. They, they would simply have access to the, to the, to the room during operating hours.
I think that's reasonable.
Is that?
One other quick, I don't know if it, one other question is that I know that if somebody came to you with a program that they wanted to do, an event they wanted to do, and it aligns with the library, do you consider them differently? Would you?
Yes.
So, but is that known in the community?
Uh.
If I know, if I know that, you know, the whole, you and I talked about the, uh, Suckers Cafe group, which, you know, is a philosophy group and that could be, could be made more available to the community.
To me, that would be a library sponsored program, you know, in, in the parlance of our current policy. And a couple of good examples of that would be we partner with, um, the Oregon City Chess Club. Um, so we work with them, um, to kind of figure out, hey, you have a need to have meeting space to facilitate chess. We would love to have some Sunday programming, you know, to allow people to come in and play chess. So we work with them and so that is now a library sponsored program. Um, same thing with the genealogy group. We have the genealogy coming every fourth Tuesday or whenever it is.
That's during, again, it's during business hours.
During operating. So yeah, and if somebody approached us with, hey, we've got a great idea for an after hours program, we'd love to partner you with. We would do what we do with everybody is, you know, engage, engage our programmers and say, hey, is this something you're interested in? It's something that we think would be worth, you know, doing in partnership with this group. And in that case, it would be a library sponsored program and yes, we can use after hours because we'll staff those.
So do you have enough now?
Uh, I think so. I guess, okay, so we've got, let me, let me just make sure, let me summarize in my own words. So we've got kind of first tier library, so I'm talking about use of the room. So first, um, tier is libraries, library programs and administrative use, um, as necessary. Second tier would be, I really like this phrasing, um, you know, city, county or other local government agencies. Um, you can use it for private or public as dictated by law, um, what they need. Um, and then the third tier would be, it sounds like we're mortgage and maintaining kind of that nonprofit information exchange group, um, and not necessarily going into, that's what I want to clarify, not necessarily going into private parties and the like. Is that, am I correct that that's kind of the?
I think so.
I know, I know there's not unanimity, but there's consensus, the majority of the board, and that's where I want to go. Okay. Um, and then after hours, we are going to go forward with crafting an after hours, um, process that would allow neighborhood associations and CPOs within our service area to access the building after hours with adequate training. And, and, and a commitment to help support the other neighborhood associations with their neighborhood association members.
Imagine a reoccurring reservation?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Right, like, I know there's, yeah, individuals, especially in this space, of those reservations, they don't, and, and there's some guidelines around that, isn't there?
Up here, there currently is for the community room, there is no guideline in the policy yet. It's basically, so I would love to get something.
So there was none in policy, but I think we did in practice. So, um, we're, yeah, we would usually only go like three months out so that our programmers had first kids on the room. Um, I think three months out is still kind of, we don't always know what we're doing three months from now.
Yeah.
Um.
I, I personally would not want to go any more than two months out.
Yeah.
Because we get opportunities to do programs. We have great ideas and wanna.
Yeah.
Do them, you know?
And then how many times within that, you know, 30 days are they allowed to meet is also, like, you can't use that room every Monday ever. At four o'clock, then nobody else can.
We, we can bring back a suggestion, uh, but if you've got thoughts, you know, now that always helps us, you know, that always helps us dial in. So I'm spitballing, if we said, you know, you can, you can make a, you can reserve that room downstairs and we can try this for six months or a year and see where it goes. Um, you, you can't reserve more than two months out and you are limited to one use per, you know, each group is limited to one. Other than the neighborhood associations, you know, which they, they can use.
Neighborhood associations are gonna want to know, you know, the whole year, so, but I mean, so. But that's already unique for after hours.
Yeah.
Definitely need after hours, so we could probably look at that separately.
Yeah, and we'll have to figure out, I, I just don't know if the, I have to look at, I have a spreadsheet somewhere which has got the schedules. I don't know if the county groups and the city groups have overlapping schedules. If you might have two groups wanting to use at the same date and time, but. First, that's, yeah, that would be first come, first served, I guess. Um, but, but.
Like having it in our service, uh, in our service area for those are also, that's an important statement that you.
Yes. And, and we, we got from the county, there are some CPOs, I, I think we asked, I have to remember exactly what they gave us, but there are some CPOs which they go aligned with our boundaries perfectly, right? So there are CPOs that have part in our service area and it might be part in S T K's service area or Molllal's service area. But I think the idea, we thought that if, if they got any part, you know, if in our service area, we're gonna treat them as their ours.
Absolutely.
Man, I think it's great. I think it's great from the standpoint of, of us doing outreach and making that available to them. I think that's really good.
Yeah, okay. Um, so on, on the recurring, so two months, I'm, I'm comfortable enough with that.
Two months and more?
Uh, it will, yeah, that's what I was thinking, two, two months and, and the group or the agency, you know, requesting that you get one, one use per month, at least a start. And the only thing is that differs from up here. Up here, we've got a 30 day. Um, we only allow reservations 30 days. Do we, do we want consistency on that? So, we'll look at the data. I'll bring you back some data about that and then we can.
Take the recommendation.
Okay. Okay, okay. Um, so I think, uh, the only other thing I wanted to just get in front of, um, this group, as part of that library administrative, um, that library administrative, uh, use, especially, there are still health concerns, you know, that we have for our staff. And so I will offer to anybody who's here in person after the meeting, if you'd like to come down to our staff room, I'll show you our staff break room that we have downstairs, which is maybe a third the size of this room. And so we have had staff who've expressed discomfort in being, having to take their breaks in such a small confined space. And so staff have been using the community room. And I just want to make sure that.
Well, if it's not being used, then.
Yeah, use it if it's not being used.
And I could foresee there might be a time if, you know, as, we're in a new health world. So there might be a time I come back and say to this board, I have an operational need to provide my staff with a safe place to have, you know, to have breaks. And so we may need to curtail use of that room during times when community members want to use it. But, but I feel strongly that we need to.
Yeah.
I need to provide a safe environment for staff. Okay.
Absolutely.
So that, that, that's, that's, okay, okay, good, thank you.
There's a difference between policy and law. You know, we're in charge of policy. We are in charge of law. So I think just remembering that, that whatever policy we set can be changed by the policymakers. So, you know.
And as patterns like emerge, that is easier to determine, like if you did do a block off sometimes.
Yes.
Or if there was, yeah, it comes an issue with this.
And I just.
Definitely impressed.
That's good. And, and it's more for my comfort because I, you know, the, the minute we do something like that, somebody in the community is not going to react well. I always like to be able to say, we've had that conversation with our library board and, you know, we're all, we're all agreed on this. This is how we're gonna perform. So, um, and I think, that's, I don't know. Okay, that gives me enough to come back. I'm hoping to come back with, um, uh, with a policy, uh, an update or an updated, that's good, recommend a policy. So all aims for January, I'll come back because I know that the meeting room space is, uh, issue is. Yes, yes. And, and I will, the city is also working on other things. Like I said, it's not just, you know, the, the library is not expected to shoulder the burden of all meeting room needs throughout the city. So the city is working on other, other things.
Interesting is the policies that would come out of, like, one of the other ones is at the, the safety building.
Yeah.
The police department, that's another space that's gonna be available to, um, like neighborhood associations. What kind of parameters they have around that?
Yeah, yeah, so, okay.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna use some, just, I'm gonna shift the order of the next two items because I think we can. So I'd like to just open the, the discussion of the development of the library security camera policy. Um, when I first read this, I said, wait a minute, this is a legal, this is a city legal issue. And it's that the city attorney draft a policy and let's follow it. And that's sort of where I am with, with this thing, with the, you know, with the one. I mean, and I've read the, the American Library Association's work about, you know, invading people's privacy and tracking what they're reading and what they're looking at and whatnot. And clearly we, we don't want to, we're not gonna be doing that. And that's not the purpose. The purpose is for safe, comfortable environment, uh, for staff and the public. And that's what it would be used for, you know, it's used for following the letter of the law as described by the city attorney. And I don't, I mean, what, what else do we need here?
Uh, I think mainly it's, I want to give some examples of different policies that different libraries have used successfully, right? Because they kind of, they all take a different approach to it. I, I guess I just want to make sure that this group is comfortable. I, I think we should have a policy that speaks to this because we don't have one currently and we do use security cameras in the building. Um, and we've had some internal discussions about that. Um, so I'd like to have a policy. Um, I think the, the, the biggest thing is, is we're gonna have to strike the balance, just like you say. We've got these industry ethics, um, and, and, and standards that we take on respecting privacy, um, and which we, we all feel to our bones, right? It's very important to us. And then it's balanced with, we're a public facility that has, you know, that needs to be safe um, and accessible and used by everybody. And sometimes there's tension between those two things. And so I want to make sure that, you know, we, we find the right balance for this community between those two sometimes competing imperatives. And, and it can be things like, you know, there, there are some libraries who say, for example, you know, they never look at their security cameras unless it's in response to something that has already happened. And there are other libraries who say, you know, we, we use this to be able to monitor places that we know are high, you know, high, high likelihood of vandalism or something like that. In the past, our practice has probably fallen somewhere in the middle, you know, if we don't sit on the cameras all day long. But I'm not gonna say that we've never opened up the camera just to say, hey, what's going on, you know? I heard something going on. I mean, you just gotta see what's going on in the team area. So I, I want to make sure that whatever we land on is something that's acceptable to the community, you know, something that, that, that safeguards our commitment to privacy, but at least for me, also helps me create a safe environment for anybody coming into the building.
Isn't there a city policy already? Because certainly, certainly other city offices and buildings and whatnot are, have security cameras, right?
I put a request, I, I put, I put that question to our city administration and I haven't heard that yet. I am unfamiliar with citywide, with the citywide camera policy. That doesn't mean one doesn't exist.
If there is one, then I would think we would look at that and modify it.
Exactly, that was my point.
Writing our own and fighting against opposition.
We, we, I, I, and I don't think there would be, I don't think we'll get any pushback on, on the policy that we draft. We'll make it as consistent with city policy as possible, but I think there will be some leeway and some understanding that we are a different environment, you know? There, there's a difference between filming people as they're doing their business in a library where they have, do have this expectation of privacy versus, you know, walking into city hall and, you know, paying their water bill. You know, there, there, there's a different expectation.
I don't, I don't necessarily think that's so. I mean, we're filmed everywhere at the bank and Red Fire. You know, I, I think people are, would probably be surprised to find out that they weren't being filmed. I think they need to know whatever the law is about knowing them, but I don't, no. I read, skimmed through that LA stuff, but I just think, I'm not sure that people really, as long as we're not filming what they're reading, you know, or what they're checking out or whatever. Like, I just feel like to keep it as simple as possible and find out what, what the law is.
We have the right concerns. I, I, let's get the city policy.
Okay.
And then let's see if we need to adapt it for the library at all.
I do like the last policy that you shared, the Hubbard Memorial Library, because it is the shortest and simplest.
Yeah.
This is, this is our, our, you know, what we, the library stand for. This is, we have cameras. Right, you know, we're letting them know.
But I mean, we can't have one that's kind of that contradicts city policy.
No, and, and we, we never would, and honestly, I think anything that we come up with is probably gonna be more restrictive and have more limits on the way staff use it than any other city department because again.
Well, there probably state privacy laws that are applicable too, and that, and attorney needs to know.
If the city attorney.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, yeah, the, the city attorney would definitely look at it, but I.
Here and then say, you know, what's already happening? What's the law? And then how does that play out at the library in the simplest possible way?
Yeah, but I, I just, I, the, the answer was the city attorney, but you've got latitude, right? You know, there, there, there are certain things that, you know, that we can and can't do, but within that, you know, we've got, like our behavior policy, our behavior policy is the same thing. There's certain things that, yes, you can't come into any public building and stab somebody, you know?
Right.
We have very, we have leeway in, in, in placing restriction, time and place restrictions on free speech in a library. We can dictate what behaviors are acceptable or not to a certain degree. And that's gonna be probably the same response on the security cameras is first figure out what, you know, what you need to do and what's acceptable to you. And then we can bounce that against what statute says. And, you know, we'll always defer to statute when we have to, but within that, you're gonna have some leeway about how you wanna run your options.
Let's take a formal request to see if there is a policy in the city and what the statutes that relate to it are. And then let's take a look and see if we can adapt it.
Okay.
Great. All right, uh, the tactical plan, um, remember this is a very, very much a first draft. It's a drafty draft. And as I, I mentioned to, uh, I went through it with, with some detail and I, um, I had two responses, or three. One, that the work is really being done and people are focusing and they're doing serious work and, and we're gonna wind up with a, a better plan for it. But second, and, and secondly, I really didn't want to see any policy, anything in the plan that discriminated between Oregon city residents and non-residents. And then, and I found that in one place where we talked about getting every Oregon city kid a library card. I mean, I just, it just raised, you know, instantly raised concern uh, that, that we're thinking about these people in different ways to begin with. And second, I think we ought to reach out to understanding that our, that the relationship between library staff and the Oregon city school district is probably the best of any of the school districts, since the majority of our kids. Uh, but that said, I think we ought to reach out to every public and private school and try to offer in some way, you know, to get every kid a library card, you know, full stop. Uh, so that was just one response. I really want to be sure that our language does not discriminate between in and out of because that, that can only cause trouble.
And I have a question on the same issue because I'm frequently accused of being emotionally hurt when you're as old as anyone. And when I was in school. When I was in school, if somebody had, had said, we're gonna generate a library card for you, I would have said, I don't want it. What do we do in that case?
Our parents, we don't like it.
So yes, so, so I didn't want to get too much into the weeds on this. But, but let, let me take two minutes. So I, I, I totally hear. So, so, so I didn't want to get too much into the weeds on this, but, but let, let me take two minutes. So I, I, I totally hear that and, and, and we can definitely update the language around it. Yeah, yeah.
I, I just wanted to make my, yeah, point.
That's, yes.
It's a dangerous language to use, that's all.
So, so the, the idea behind this, what, what we'd like to do and other library systems, um, both nationwide and locally have done this very successfully. Washington County has several, uh, school districts that work with their libraries and do this. Which is great, because our new school, our district superintendent comes from Hillsborough, so she's very familiar with this. But what happens is you work out a memorandum, a memorandum of understanding with the school district or with whoever you're working with. Uh, because there are federal privacy laws on student data, um, and you work out how you're gonna transfer that data. And basically what happens is we create an account in our system so that if a kid comes in with their student ID, you know, they can just show us their student ID and we can type, you prompt a prefix, it'll be like OC, and then their student ID number, and they can use that as a library card. And they can check out a certain number of items on that. The parents have the option, so my understanding is in the school district every year, parents get, you know, here's all the things that, you know, we'd like to sign your kid up for. If there's anything from which you'd like to opt out, please let us know. And this would be one of those things that parents could, parents could opt out, um.
For the kid. That's a nicer way to do it, right? And make it a spirit.
Yes, yes.
Right. So it's just their, their ID number? Is that what you're?
That would be the goal. That would be the easiest.
They don't physically get an ID card until they're older?
Yes.
But they would have that, yeah.
Or if they came in, you know, that, and, and we've talked, you know, internally, there are gonna be circumstances where, you know, a kid might already have their own card. Um, and we'll try to do duplicate matching. Every, every other library we've looked at has done this, you know, tries to weed out duplicate. It's never perfect, but the worst thing that happens is, okay, one kid has two accounts and can check out an extra, you know, five or 10 items. That's okay. We can live with that. But, um, but yeah, it, it, the, the, the goal, I don't want to generate individual cards and mail them out to people, because that's at an expense, you know? The idea is that it's just your, your, um, your student ID. And that would really help, because one of the, one of the challenges that we face is when we get school groups coming over to do school tours, they want to sign up for library cards. And if you've got a group of thirty kids coming in and all they're gonna do is sign up for library cards, there's the two, you know, there's no more tour. That's gonna take an hour. You know, just to get these data entered into, and, and there's parental.
Right.
You know, we gotta coordinate with the parents. So this, we think, would be a really easy way to expand access to, to create support young readers. Um, to make sure that, you know, a, a, and this particular activity, we can change the goal language. This particular activity would be focused on the school district, because it's a large, you know, it's a large source of those cards coming in. We've got some templates and some past experiences with other organizations that we can model and use in that. But yes, I, we would love to be able to offer that once we have a working, you know, system with this big school district. How do we expand that to other, you know, other education, you know, private schools or, um, others? How do we facilitate the same thing so that those kids also have luxury cards? So.
I, I, well, I guess just if we're getting into the actual goal, to be honest, the library card is an activity. That's, the goal is you want to increase the, the level of involvement of those students in the library. So, but, but while, you know, it's something tangible, overall, you want more kids to be doing the programming, checking out the book rest and, and that side of things. So I would, I would feel better if that is the goal. And then the activities are.
I had that same note to myself. It's like, well, that's really an activity, but the goal is, you know, in, increased library use by Oregon City Public Schools students or whatever, you know?
Hey, good. Right. That is great feedback. Hey, I got notes on all of that.
And then just the last point, the only other one that I saw there when I was reading it, is that I thought, I, I thought some of the deliverables were coming too slowly. And, you know, we're out into two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five, and Greg and I, you know, have talked about this some, and the, the one that, that, you know, like putting boxes out in rural areas and whatnot, that's because we're getting into a budget issue. And, and once, once we get into the budget issue, it puts it into the next budget period. And that, that's why this is bureaucratically taking longer than I would like it to take.
Well, and that's a, that one is, I'm really thinking you have to get some of that information back from that survey.
Yes.
Yeah. Before you can, I mean, you know, the boxes have been successful other places, and it seems like that would be a big problem since. But if you get some information that people want you to be at their farmer markets and, you know, Redland Grange instead, then, then that, you know, then that would be how the
Right.
information and the whole thing would be exchanged.
But, but basically that one was saying it wasn't gonna roll out, you know, till twenty twenty-five. And that just, you know, that's three years away. And, uh, that, that seemed like it was too long a period to wait, because we'll have the survey results by next spring, um, in twenty twenty-three. And so it's trying to balance the budget and the, and the delivery of the, the strategic, you know, and the tactic.
You kind of bring that, yeah, all budgets and then, you know, staffing and evaluation, like the whole, like, inter tour.
Yes, yes. And, and I told them, I'll, I'll tell the group. Yes, there, there are some, some of these, you know, I know we can do them faster than what I put on there, but for, for those reasons, I, I, I would like eventually to align this with budget cycles, uh, because that just makes it much easier for us to, our budgetary requests and, and, um, uh, and then, yeah, there, there's, I, I also, since this is the first, the first try at this, there was some, I would like to give our staff, you know, a little.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Let's get, let's get good at doing it this way first.
Yes. Well, this is the first tactical plan. And so it, you know, it's a living document, you know, and again, you know, it's policies, not law, and those can be changed. I have a question, though, on Focus Two. A library will better understand the needs of residents and unincorporated portion. I know I represent unincorporated Beaver Creek. Are there other unincorporated areas? And what are they?
I, I represent one of the unincorporated areas.
What's your?
Like just out on Red, South Red, Redland Roads.
Okay. Yeah, I, I didn't know how those were defined, and I just needed to know that from.
I'm not, yeah. That might be a CPO. Is Beaver Creek a CPO?
Yeah, um.
Well, that, that's another question. First, I want to know about the unincorporated areas.
Let me pull up the map real quick. Uh, and then Nick, I'm gonna share a screen so you can see this too. Just a minute, give me a second.
See, this is what happens when you send the documents out and we read them, right?
So it was before nobody was reading them?
Reading, reading. And also, and I appreciate it. Yeah, there, there's, that's sometimes why the packets get to be so big, because I'm trying to, um,
Right.
The goal is always anything that we discuss here that we provide to the public and we can advance. So sometimes I err on the side and give you too much. So there's our service area. So the, the, the black hash mark is city, is the city limits. Um, and so you can see, you know, I mean, it goes right to the, to the eastern border of Kansas. So this is the Caris, I just like Caris CPO um, is here, um. Uh, we had his Beaver Creek. There's, um, I've got his county CPO map somewhere. Let me, let me pull up the county CPO map. So. I mean, it's really all the people that live in, I don't, I mean, in our service area that we live outside the city, but that, that's a part of our territory. Geographically. Uh, there we go. Here is a principal boundary now. That was. Yeah, so let me see if I can zoom in a little more on this. There. So we've got, it's not a perfect overlap, but, you know, we've got some of the Holcomb Outlooks CPO in our group. We've got the Hamlet Beaver Creek, which I think is, it was originally two different CPOs, and I think they sort of combined. I'd have to go look. We've got the Central Point New Era CPO. There used to be, or maybe it was the Caris CPO got absorbed into here. You know, there's some area here that doesn't have, it looks like they don't have an active CPO, but they're in our service area. Um. Yeah, we, we've got, yeah, we've got some of this.
Is this a map something where we can access it on our own?
Yeah, yeah. I, I'll, I'll send out the link. This is not a classless Kennedy's.
I think when we're talking about unincorporated areas, we really need to probably broaden our thinking a little bit and really know who we're talking about. I don't think we all know that.
A lot of that is the purpose of the service too, is to really get the charities to, you know.
Well, and I think one of the ta, one of the activities we have on here is to do a full demographic analysis of our service area and get answers to things like that. So I agree. I don't, I don't, this is, for some cotton, this is a very large service area. And so it's like under tens of square miles. I, I got, I, I did the math. And so we've got the city of Oregon City, and we've got an unincorporated population, which is larger than the population of the city of Milwaukee. And it's almost as big as.
That's why we need to know this, because why don't, over time, we can't adequately understand the needs of these areas unless we know what the areas are.
Yeah.
And then I had a question. I, you know, Beaver Creek is a ham, an official hamlet. Does the hamlet serve as a CPO? Or is there a CPO operating under the hamlet? How does that work?
That I would have to reach out to the county and find out.
Okay.
Um.
But I don't know the answer to that.
No, I, I don't know the answer.
Okay, so. Post office and everything.
Yeah.
What? You have your own post office and everything.
Right. And we're, we're, we have official hamlet status, you know, in the eyes of the county, that, and also legal states thing. And so but is, does the hamlet serve as the CPO? I don't know.
I believe they do. Cause the, the other thing.
Well, it came up on the CPO map.
Yeah. And, and I've got an email from my contact, the county. She, she did this, uh, Beaver Creek. The, the thing about CPA, it's interesting, the, the genesis of the CPA was in land use, right? It was when, when the state did their land use goals. That's where CPOs come from. The original conception of them was more to provide feedback on land use decisions that counties and jurisdictions bring. And they've evolved, you know, so you've got some CPOs, um, you know, like I remember when I was at the county, uh, Oak Grove Community Council, you know, is, is a CPO. But they are a very active, they, 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 they talk a lot about the other issues other than land. So I know some of our county CPOs do the same thing, and our neighborhood associations do the same thing. So, you know, the role of those groups has changed over time. Um, and, and I know that some of, you know, some of the county ones, you know, they're very active. And things like that. And some of them only meet a couple of times a year, only when there's a land use, you know, only when there's a land use.
Any other general comments?
I just had a question about, on Focus Two, about serving the homebound, uh, participants, which I think is wonderful, but how is homebound determined by whom?
Generally, what we do, what other library systems have done, um, is you, we have a, some sort of application process. And i- it's not like we're gonna send out a medical professional to, to verify, oh, no, you can't get it because it's mostly self-reported. The, the, the goal is we could, like Multnomah County has mailing books as a convenience. If you want to pay for the postage, you can have books mailed to you. We're not, we're not suggesting that right now, because we don't have the staffing to be able to do that. So we want to make sure that the people we're offering this mailing service to do have some sort of, you know, restriction of mobility. So it would probably just be in our application, we would ask them a question, you know? Why do you need homebound service? And it's not that we're gonna be, the intent is not to grill people.
Yeah, yes.
And, uh, yeah.
Any other general comments to feedback for Greg? Greg, Greg, okay. Are you satisfied?
I, sure. Yeah, I, we, we will, we'll take those comments. We will. We'll probably do a little more internal refinement, but I'll bring it back to another meeting. And then just so everybody knows, then the next step would be I would take this to the city commission and then say, you know, we've, we've got an updated, updated strategic plan. This is how we'd like to do things going forward. I have talked to our city manager. I, I, I don't think there would be much consideration.
I just have a kind of a language thing. For example, on Focus Three, library staff will be able to recognize and incorporate. I, I would like a more active, uh, voice there that the library staff recognizes and incorporates.
There you go.
So that it's, it's more.
Listens to and responds.
Yeah, it's more, it's, it's more measurable for one thing, you know?
Sure.
You know, and, and so, uh, I just, throughout, I think instead of will be able to, I, I would like to see that active or, you know, recognizes, incorporates, uh, listens, accesses, you know, whatever. So that.
That's great. We can do that. I guess my other question would be for our chair, if the chair is, is willing, I, I have found the feedback, you know, especially when it comes to word spitting. Um, our, our, our strategic planning committee has been invaluable in helping with that. Would we be open to maybe a turn spitting session?
Oh, sure.
With that group before I bring it back to the full group.
We can do, you know, I mean, how far along are we on, on the, on the draft tactical plan? Is that the complete?
This identifies all the work that staff, you know, that we can.
Do in the term.
That we can do in the timeframe and that we all feel really good about. If, if there are other things that you told us, hey, you're missing.
Yeah.
You're totally missing this, we would certainly, you know, take that.
Let's keep our eyes open. Let's think about that and get any feedback that you might think, you know, to, to Greg about that.
So under this, so under this Greg, we'll have project plans, that one, like that one pager?
Yes, that, that is the goal, but we haven't gotten there yet. So.
Because that, that's where the rubber meets the road.
Yes, that, that would be the goal. And that'll be another conversation. You all want to, I, I want to be able to develop, present a project plan that shows, you know, kind of, hey, we've got a good path going forward, but I want to also be cognizant of the staff kind it takes to, you know, post. You know, I can't do a Gantt chart, you know, I'm, I'm not trained in Microsoft projects, so it's, it's, uh, you might not get a full Gantt chart of every single, uh, dependency and, you know. I like looking at them. I don't, I don't like.
I thought, I thought we simplified that pretty well.
Yes, yes.
Now, one page for a project, but at least it would, it would help with the definition of, of what we're accomplishing towards that goal. And it makes it, you know, like if we say twenty twenty-four, well, how are we gonna get there?
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be through projects.
Yes. And so, yes, that, that is the goal, is we'll put those together. We just haven't gotten that far. I just, I, you know, I kind of wanted to, to touch base with the group and say, this is, again, as a staff, we talk this through and this is kind of.
I think it's a good, really great for a staff. I think the staff, these were.
Certainly.
The first time I've seen Smart and Gold. I haven't seen the I E.
I, that was, yeah.
I appreciate that.
I did, that was from, uh, that was from Elizabeth, uh, who's, who's our member, who's currently on leave. Um, I, I had only known Smart also, and she said, I know Smarty now. I said, oh, very cool. So, yeah, yeah.
So next year they'll have pants.
They're gonna have to come up with a good act.
All right. Well, with that, let's adjourn the work session at six ten and.
And it's not necessarily, I was just wondering with our, like our interviews and our, our recommendations, is there anything?
I, I have not heard that. So those.
And I haven't invited Mayor either.
I, I provided the feedback to Mayor McGriff. Uh, I filled out the form that the city uses. I sent her links to all the interviews. And I, I extended, uh, you know, I, I passed on David's, um, contact information that should she have any questions, she wants to speak to him as the chair of the library board, that he doesn't have a chair available. And so I, the normal process is, is the first, basically the first meeting of the year, the first city commission meeting of the year is when mayors typically announce those. And I would presume that if the mayor was going to do something different than what the board had recommended, that she would reach out and have a conversation about that.
I'm curious.
Nope. Yep.
All right. So we're, they're sporting it off now?
Uh, no, not yet. So we are officially, we are adjourned.
We are adjourned.
Yes, okay.